I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Bajin.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
Thanks. Next up, we have requests for approval of the council meeting, council minutes from the work session evening meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the city council minutes from the work session and regular evening meeting of August 31st. Second.
We have a motion, second clerk.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Now, we have a lot of special business to do tonight. First off, we have the appointment, let me make sure that I can't combine any of these, of James Otradoski to the building code board for a four-year term ending September 2025.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of James Otradoski to the building code board for a four-year term ending September 2025.
Without objection?
There's Jim.
Excellent. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
You're approved. You're welcome to say anything if you would like.
Wanted to say I appreciate being brought back on to the committee, something I feel very strongly about, being able to use my professional knowledge and interests to help, help the city of Boise and help with building code approvals. So appreciate your vote of confidence. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. We really do appreciate it. Next up, we have the appointment of Sherry Barber to the Parks and Rec Commission for a three-year term ending September 2024. Yes, come on up. We'll go through it, but I'm so glad you're here. Yeah, you couldn't, you couldn't see me. Well, and also you can't read lips because my lips are covered by my mask and I was like, is that you? Welcome. But we'll do the motion first and then would love for you, for you to say a couple of words. We're so glad to have you.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of Sherry Barber to the Parks and Rec Commission for a three-year term ending September 2024.
Without objection. What's official, Sherry? Thanks for your willingness to serve. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said that too. Sorry about that. The mic.
And I would just like to say thank you as well. I love listening to Boise. I've been here for 30 years. I'm looking forward.
Excuse me. Sorry, your, your mic, I think, is not on. I see technical pushing a button on their hand. Back behind us, we're all, we're all trying to do these things tonight that. Okay, now I think it's on.
Anyway, I won't take much of your time. I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Boise. I love Boise. I've been here for 30 years. I raised my children here. My children are raising their children here. And part of the reason I wanted to serve is because Boise is kind of misrepresented. They think people who look like me don't live here, and we do. And so I'm excited to have a sit at the table and be able to bring what our experiences are to the table and hopefully make Boise feel more welcome to have people, by popular people in our community. That's why I'm here.
Well, thank, thank you, Sherry. I really enjoyed the conversation that we had. Sherry is a graduate of a boards and fellowship program that was put together to help folks in the community get ready for service. And so it was great to have you volunteer step up and enjoy the conversation we had.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very, I'm looking so forward to serving and being a part of, serving our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, now we have two appointments for the open space and clean water advisory committee for three-year terms, both ending September 2024. And that is an appointment of Tia Nowaki and Patty Bowen.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of Tia Nowaki and Patty Bowen to the open space and clean water advisory committee for three-year terms ending September 2024.
Without objection. And I see Tia on the screen right now. So congratulations, Tia. You've been approved. Thank you for your service and you're welcome to say anything you'd like.
Oh, great. Thank you. I'm very excited to be here and I appreciate the opportunity. I'm a runner and a hiker and a frequent user of the trails and I really think access to and quality of the trails are one of Boise's defining characteristics. So I currently work as a healthcare provider and a healthcare educator. And in my experience, nature and outdoor activity is generally the best medicine. So I look forward to being in a position to promote and support and build awareness for a conservation, the conservation goals for Boise. So thank you again. I look forward to serving.
Thank you, Tia.
Thank you.
And is Patty here with us this evening? Oh, Patty's in person. Welcome. I didn't see you back there. I'm sorry.
You are totally fine. Um, yeah, thank you guys so much for appointing me. I'm really excited to be able to serve the city of Boise. I'm born and raised here. I love this, love this city very much. Like Tia, I'm also a hiker and a runner, so I use the trails a lot. And I think our open spaces are one of the things that provide equality for everyone. It doesn't matter what background you come from or what you do with your life. Everyone has the opportunity to enjoy our open spaces. And so I'm really excited to be able to continue to push for equity across our city. So everyone has access to those spaces regardless of where you come from. So thank you guys so much for letting me be a part of it.
Welcome. Thanks for your service. And I just want to let both of you know that if you would prefer to head on to other things, you are welcome to leave. It happens often. So don't feel as though you were stuck here in the front row for the rest of the evening. All right. Thank you both for your service. Really appreciate it. Look forward to working with you. And next up, we have the appointment of Alex Winkler. Alex is joining us by Zoom to serve as our city's chief information officer. I believe that each of you has seen Alex's resume. I'll just say that she came highly recommended by the committee of staff people throughout the city that did interviews, recommended her to me. I truly enjoyed the conversation we had and completely fascinated by the fact that Alex is a former pilot and, and like a military pilot, like not just a regular pilot. And I'm excited to welcome her to the team upon your approval, if you're so willing, that serves as our executive management team here at the city of Boise.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move approval of the appointment of Alex Winkler to serve as the chief information officer for the city of Boise.
Second. We have a motion and second. Do we do discussion beforehand or whatever you all want?
Yeah. I would just say I am glad to hear that you're so excited about this. I did look at Alex's resume and was very impressed and look forward to having her skills on your team.
Madam Mayor, I echo the council president's sentiments and also wanted to add that Alex and I are both Girl Scout leaders and I think that that's really awesome. So welcome to the city, Alex. I'm really excited to have your extensive government and technology experience helping out our team. Thank you.
All right. Well, wait, did we vote? We didn't vote. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Well, congratulations, Alex. You're confirmed as our next CIO. Congratulations and welcome. And the Zoom room is yours.
Thank you. I really appreciate the nomination and this confirmation. Very excited to serve. I love that I'm starting just before the fiscal year, so I'll be involved in operational planning. Feels like really good timing and a great time to start. I really love leading change and transformation, implementing technology and solving people, process and technology problems. So the chance to be able to do it for my adopted city of Boise is just too good to be true. So thank you very much for having me. I look forward to solving lots of great problems with, with the team and for agencies and the citizens alike. Are there any questions?
Don't forget, Alex. Congratulations. And I'll just extend both my apology and deep well of gratitude to Healthwise, from whom he coached you.
Thank you.
Very, very soon.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, we have one ordinance on first reading.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on first reading be read by number and title only and filed for the second reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-42-21, an ordinance many Boise City Code Title VI, Chapter 10B, Section 6, to add Juneteenth, June 19th to the city of Boise City's list of qualities for which city parking meter spaces are free and provide an effective date.
And we have one ordinance on second reading.
Madam Mayor.
Yep.
I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-41-21, an ordinance for property located at 2605 Linda Vista Lane. I'm in zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in section one of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from R-1B to R-1C, sending forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change and provide an effective date.
Thank you. And next up, we have one ordinance on third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ordinance 4D-21 be dispensed with and the record reflect that it has been read for the third time in full. Second.
Do we motion a second clerk?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-40-21, an ordinance CAR 20-00019 for property located at 1522 West State Street. I'm in zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in section one of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from PCDD, pedestrian commercial with downtown design review, to C-5DDDA, central business district with downtown design review and development agreement, sending forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change and provide an effective date.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that ORD 40-21 be approved. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second clerk?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we'll move into new business. We have one subdivision this evening. Cody will present for the city, Jay Gibbons, for the applicant. We don't expect the neighborhood association or anybody from the public. But let me know. Oh, it looks, nope, that's a different one. Just a second. Let me know if you are here for this. And otherwise, we'll check in with the applicant after Cody does his short presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This request is for approval of a preliminary plat for a residential subdivision that includes eight buildable and two common lots. The just under two acre site is located at the southwest corner of Franklin and Five Mile Roads and LOD or limited office with design review zone. The subdivision was heard along with the plan unit development by the planning commission in July. The decision at that time was not opposed and it was therefore not appealed. So it is only that subdivision that's before you this evening. Again, the project includes eight buildable lots. One of the lots will support a detached, single-family home while the remaining will be occupied by attached dwellings. Parking for each will be provided in enclosed garages with enclosed, with additional guest parking provided towards the back, back of the site. Access to that parking will be provided from a single service drive and then two other existing service drives along Franklin Road will be, will be closed. There was really no opportunity for connectivity given the constraints of the site. The adjacent property was already developed and the arrangement there won't accommodate a connection. I would note that the applicant is required by condition to widen a narrow, narrow segment of sidewalk along the eastern portion of the site. I believe most of the sidewalk along Franklin is seven, a seven foot wide and in good shape attached facility. It tapers to five feet over towards the eastern corner and the applicant will be required to widen that sidewalk. Finally, I would note that the site is really void of significant vegetate vegetation. So there are really no concerns from that perspective. The site itself is part of a community activity center and then about a third of a mile from existing transit services. So certainly a good location for some additional housing. It'll provide a transition from the single-family homes up the hill into the south and then the Idaho power facility that's to the north. With that, as noted in your packet, the commission did find the preliminary plaque consistent with the development code. And so therefore, we are recommending approval of the subdivision this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Cody?
Madam Mayor, Cody, the riding back canal easement. Is it already protected to put a pathway there in the future or is it? As part of this, could we do that? Or is there just no room?
Madam Mayor. I wasn't quite sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, this is, this is a tough one. There's a letter from the irrigation district in your packet that, given where the canal sits, not at the intersection, but as you trout, as you head west on the site, it's a significant change in elevation from the canal down to the site. So they were concerned with any sort of infringement on the easement itself, as well as the supporting, supporting slope. So that combined with the very limited depth of the parcel as it relates to Franklin Road would make it really, really challenging here. You know, looking at it, I don't know if I have an aerial, but it could be, I mean, we could continue to work to provide access from the corner right along the top of the bank. And then perhaps at some point a connection if this property further to the west were to redevelop. Perhaps we, there would be enough space to get up to the, up to the canal, but very difficult on this site.
Madam Mayor, if I could follow up, but so there's nothing in this development that would preclude that from happening. In other words, we haven't protected the opportunity in other places. Do we need to do anything to protect that opportunity?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, it would need to occur. There's, there's an easement for the canal there already. So if we could negotiate something with the canal company, it could certain, there's nothing here that would preclude that from happening. It's just with below the slope on the site, there's really not space for it.
And can we ensure that the CCNRs do not preclude the opportunity? That's, that's where we've seen it in the past.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, that would be an appropriate addition to the CCNRs that we could review before there.
Thank you.
All right. We will hear from the applicant. Welcome, Mr. Gibbons.
Madam Mayor, Council, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here to represent this application. My name is Jay Gibbons. My address is 2002 South Vista here in Boise. The, from an app, from an applicant standpoint, landowner standpoint, we have no issue with, with the conditions that have been set forth previously by the planning zoning commission. And I will stand for questions. I can explain further about.
Yeah, why don't you just jump right into the question the council president had?
Okay. So with regard, I had, of course, I have extensive experience with the irrigation district. Napmeridian have a, have a a close working relationship with them from my, my time as the city of Meridian's Pathways Project Manager. Handling the pathway regards to the city of Meridian, their pathway plan. The conversation that I had with the, the district's superintendent and, and his second command reinforced what I was, was beat into my head as, as a project manager for pathways in Meridian was that the issue with, with pathways along the canals themselves, because they're, they're swift water. Typically, there, there are sections that are, that are concreted, so they're slippery. It is, it is, it has a current. They do allow pathways along canals, but what they would encourage is to maintain their, their service road, not, not impeded by a pathway or a pathway on the service road. It makes perfect sense for, for, you know, dual use. But in this regard, it's all developed on the south side. So we only have, and as you as a city only have the opportunity on the north side. The problem, the, the underlying issue is a safety issue and part of it is, is irrigation district staff. Their, their major objection is that as soon as they allow a pathway on their service drive and what it turns into anytime that their district employees are out there to maintain the, the pathway or, or excuse me, the, the canal itself or any other waterway. The, the public kind of takes ownership of the pathway and then it can get ugly. I've seen it get ugly personally. The public just then raises a fit over the, the maintenance concern for the canal and that's troublesome. The, the district doesn't want to put their employees in that situation. It happens. But from our development standpoint, we don't have an issue with providing easement. But we don't want to be a part of the pathway project that, at current until, you know, such time as the city has come together. I know that the city is, is they're exploring the opportunity to come up with a pathway plan similar, you know, there are other cities that have kind of gone down that road from Meridian too. I can tell you from Meridian's perspective. When they set out to adopt their, create a pathways plan several years ago. They brought the irrigation districts, they brought landowners and a whole lot of stakeholders to the table and worked out an agreement with the irrigation district for a way that to involve the irrigation district into decisions that the city would make as far as those pathway. Then and Meridian's plan is a spaghetti plan. They're, they're everywhere. The only issue with their plan is that in areas that are undeveloped and they have a, they have, be it a canal or usually the laterals or, or drains specifically. It, the pathway plan shows a line on either side, on both sides. The irrigation district's only going to allow a pathway on one side. And typically, they would like it not to be the, the maintenance road itself, but they have acquiesced to a point in that regard too. They will, what they do, so they set up a process though, in that if you want to build a pathway on their, from a development perspective, there's a timeline. You need to approach them. The city, anytime I was trying to build a pathway, I had to approach the, the irrigation district with the idea and the plans for what we were trying, that whatever segment we're trying to build six months before, before it could be, be built. They needed time to work through and work through the green and make sure that we had all our ducks in a row. Plus, we'd secured all the easements from the individual landowners, homeowners associations or whoever else owned the land. But then everybody that the city and the irrigation district then entered into a license agreement that you build a pathway on our, on our easement. You have an easement from the underlying landowner. And when the maintenance company or the irrigation district comes in and mucks out the, the ditch or drain, they're allowed to put their spoils on your pathway and the city has to remove them, which is troublesome, but the city wanted pathways really bad and, and agreed to do that over and over and over again, over the time that I was with them. And, and granted, they don't do that very regularly. It's, it's, if in that six-month time period, they have an opportunity to go muck that out before we get to that sets back that, that next cleaning of the ditch another 10 years.
I think the, the crux of the council president's question was related to the CCNRs specifically.
And like I said, and, and that is fine. We're agreeable to that. We're agreeable to, if you want us to, to, on the plat itself, show a, a pathway easement on that side within the irrigation easement, we can certainly do that too.
We really appreciate that. Thank you. Um, I don't think there are any further questions. Now, I have two people signed up for this item. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Appreciate it. But I don't, Brent? I didn't think Brent was here. And Frankie? They were here earlier for the work session? Oh, that makes more sense. I think they accidentally signed, I think they accidentally signed up for this because I know that Brent was here earlier. And Plum Street is nowhere near these Franklin townhomes. So, all right. Anybody here to talk about this one? Great. Anybody online here to talk about this one?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll go ahead and wrap this one up.
All right. Madam Mayor, I move approval of the Franklin Town Homes SUB 2125 Boise City Preliminary Platt at 10805 West Franklin Road with the caveat that the CCNRs not restrict any future pathway planning. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say that I think this is a really cool little infill development. So I hope to see it built. It's a super weird site and it looks like a really great use of it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'm, I'm just a little unclear if the the condition to not restrict future pathways planning is a little bit vague and could be interpreted lots of different ways. I wonder if there's a way to make it clear or, did you see my concern? Like not restrict is.
Why don't, I'm going to jump in here. If there's concerns about that and we the developer sap, representative agrees to the intent, staff could bring back next week finalized language to review.
That sounds fantastic. Yeah, I don't have any concern at all with the intent. I think it's right on.
Okay. And with that, Cody, I trust you and council can work on that together. We'll go ahead and take a vote on this one.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the first public hearing, CP 21-31 on Federal Way. I have one person signed up. Is it Rand, is it William Brandonberg?
That's me. I don't think I was supposed to sign up, but I'm actually the applicant.
Oh, perfect. Okay, great. Well, yes, you'll be up here, but you didn't need to sign up. Um, so I have Patrick McKeegan. Are you Patrick? Great. As the applicant. So Cody will go, then the applicant. We don't expect the depot bench. If you're online, let us know. Nobody's signed up in advance. So Cody, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This item is a request for a special exception for a quite unique combination of uses that I think the applicant can better describe. All of the uses are proposed on a 1.4 acre site that's located at the intersection of Kootenay and Federal Way in an LOD or limited office with that design review zone. The commission heard the application and did recommend approval back in August. The site is currently developed with about a 1,600 square foot medical office building that is accessed from Federal Way. You can see the site also has frontage on both Kootenay and Pico Streets and the site is located in a neighborhood that's, has a quite diverse mix of uses. The project itself, again, includes a unique mix of uses. The office building I previously mentioned will remain. The applicant is proposing to add a social event center, plant conservatory, an outdoor pavilion. Finally, they're seeking approval to provide accommodation for food trucks on the property. And it's the food truck component on a, on an annual basis or a yearly basis that's not allowed in the office zone. Thus, the special exception that's before you. To grant a special exception, as you know, the use needs to be found to be of an equal or lesser impact than permitted uses in the zone. And like other conditional use permits, that the, that the proposed use be compatible with the surrounding area and that it won't generate negative impacts. We also need to find that proper zoning is not available in the immediate general neighborhood. As you can see, looking at the zoning map, it is quite a distance to any commercial zoning that would be necessary for, for this sort of use. Again, the special exception is only needed for the food truck component of the proposal. I would note that we actually can and do permit this sort of thing in various locations around the city on a temporary basis. They're actually quite popular and haven't, to this point, really generated much in the way of complaints. And for what it's worth, a lot of the modern codes actually allow this sort of thing by right in proximity to some of the residential neighborhoods at a scale like this. I think the fact that it's on a, a corner lot at the edge of the neighborhood mitigates a lot of impacts. It's also on a transit route and adjacent to a multipurpose pathway that provides a great deal of pedestrian connectivity to access the site. That really allows this to function as a true neighborhood amenity. Now, one individual did speak at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. While they expressed general support, they did question the amount of parking as it relates to occupancy and potential for noise impacts. Ultimately, the commission did find that the design of the site and orientation would mitigate many of the impacts. As it relates to parking, all of the requirements are met. And again, the site, site is quite accessible from transit and pedestrian facilities. And again, the site, site is quite accessible from transit and pedestrian, uh, facilities. Now, I would just note briefly, our original recommendation was to close all access from Federal Way. We suggested that the access to the site come from Pico Street at the back. Uh, there was quite a bit of back and forth at the hearing and ultimately the commission did allow, uh, one ride in, ride out to be retained along Federal Way for access to that medical office building. Uh, certainly that's a significant improvement from the three access points that exist on, uh, Federal Way today. Uh, but if you felt differently, that is, uh, because this is only a recommendation this evening, that's at your discretion to change that condition. Uh, so with that, that does wrap up, uh, my comments. Uh, consistent with the commission's, uh, action, we are recommending approval of the application this evening. I would note that you should have received in late correspondence a letter of support for the application, uh, from the Depot Bench Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Cody? We are happy to hear from the applicant now.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Real quick, Cody. Yep, on the site plan, can you point to where the access is? I tried to kind of suss it out in my packet, but I couldn't quite figure out where the federal way access would be.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Woodings, as it is today, there are three, the three access points. The condition requires that that change and only be, be one. So the applicant will have to make a small. This isn't the final site plan, I guess, is the, long story short, it'll be finalized through design review and limited to one ride in, ride out. With, uh, A C H D's final review, uh, the further away from that intersection, um, is the likely location.
Great, thank you. Hi, Mr. McKinnon, and I'd just say that we didn't have many questions for staff, but I'm happy to hear what you want to make us, make sure that we know in making this decision tonight.
Yeah, my name is Patrick McKeegan. I apologize for the horshness, but the, the fire and the smoke this summer just tore me up. My address is twenty four nineteen, uh, South and Net Street in Boise, and I'm the architect on the project for Dr. Brandonburg. About three years ago, Bill came to me, uh, wanting me to, um, do the architecture work for his clinic. He had the opportunity and had purchased this, this corner lot. And if anybody in the, is familiar with this, you know that in, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, it's a Christmas tree lot. Uh, the rest of the time of the year, there's various things show up. There was a guy that was selling, um, yard, yard art from Mexico. And, uh, there's just a, really been kind of an opportunity waiting to, waiting to happen. Um, Mr. Dr. Brandonburg has an extensive collection of cactus plants and no place to put them. So that's where the conservatory started as was a, a place for him to, to show off his plants and use it as a educational facility. It's evolved a little bit into kind of an event center so that, because, um, everybody kept saying, well, gee, how neat would it be to have a wedding or have a party or do something here? So, uh, it is, that's, that's where it is. It sits right now with some offices and an event area upstairs. On the other, on the, um, west corner is where we're having an outdoor pavilion, uh, which is going to be an accessory to the, um, food trucks. Uh, we are going to, um, we are calling this a plaza, which under state law allows us to serve, uh, beer and wine and have people circulate with the drinks in their hands. Uh, thanks to the city of Caldwell, that became a state law about three or four years ago, so they could do that downtown and we've talked to the, to the state police about it and as long as we designate an area, which we will internally, uh, that'll take advantage of that. The, the location we think is ideal for pedestrian, people on bicycles. There really isn't anything like this in the area. There, as you know, there are tons of apartments going up along Federal Way. I expect there's going to be more. There's apartments across the tracks from this, that big triangle of land owned by, um, the Day family is, is under, under discussion for development. We're right up the hill from the university, so I could see on game night, you know, before and after people coming up and having a good time. We designed the site so that the conservatory would act as a buffer between the residents on Pico Street and the interior activity zone. Uh, we don't intend on being open till two o'clock in the morning. That's not the intent, but on game night, I could see us being open, you know, until nine, ten, maybe even eleven o'clock if the games, if they start the games late like they did last week. And, and we could see as a buffer, we've had quite a bit of input from the people, people on Pico and, and it's all been positive. They, they understand that that law's been ripe for development and they understand that if they wanted to do something, they could have bought it and preserved it, but they understand that we have the right and, and the desire and we've met with them and it, uh, what we put together, what we think is a very quality project. Uh, the pavilion's going to be two stories. We're going to set it up, but we want to take advantage of the views of the foothills. You get up high enough, you can almost see Lucky Peak. You can see downtown and you can see the, see the university in the foothills. Inside interior, we're going to have public restrooms, going to convert the garage to public restrooms and then a storage area. The existing parking along the, the north side of the property is existing. We're maintaining that. The access points, to clarify, are going to be at the extreme north, um, east corner of the property and then on Pico Street. We're then going to pave a little access down to the doctor's clinic, so his patients will be able to find him. And then one entrance at the bottom where the fire lane is, is going to be closed, but we're going to have bollards there, so and these is a fire, emergency fire access only. There won't be any traffic through the center of this. We have, we have a fire lane there and the only time it'll be used is if, um, if they're, in the event there is a fire or when a food truck is coming or going. The intent is not to have food trucks coming here like two or three times a week. Intent is to get somebody who wants to come in, sign a six month or a one year lease. We're going to provide water, power and, and gray water sewer for them, so they don't have to go anywhere to, to refit, to, to replenish the, their truck. We're in the, uh, basement of the conservatory, we're going to provide a full kitchen that'll be available to them on a, on a, on a subscription basis to, to prepare, uh, their food and stuff. And, and, and we're going to have cooler space for them in the building and stuff to, to do that also.
So, sir, um, I am wondering, um, the design looks very sound. There's no opposition to this because you did, I imagine such a great job connect, connecting with the community around it in the design. And I'm wondering if you would be willing to stand for, for questions from?
Yes, I, I'll quit talking. I just didn't know how much information you wanted. I, I'll just, I'll just shut my mouth and stand for questions, though.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Madam Mayor, not really a question, just good to see you, Pat, and, um, excited to see, uh, uh, innovative concept like this brought forward. It looks like, uh, we found a way to make it fit into our zoning. And, um, I, I'm very impressed with the, the renderings I'm seeing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, only note that I, I really like this project. It looks wonderful. And I, I really like the fact that the Neighborhood Association submitted a letter of support. It's always nice to see when a neighborhood, uh, association says something positive about a development, um, and doesn't just show up when they disoppose, uh, so that was great to see and it says a lot about your project. Thanks.
Yeah, we, we reached out to them and they came to our neighborhood meetings and, and, and we're very supportive of the project, so.
All right, I just want to confirm that nobody is here for this one. And with that, we'll close the hearing. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I move approval of CUP twenty one dash thirty one, William Brandonburg, eleven oh five South Federal Way, special exception for a social event center comprised of a plant conservatory, event space, dining pavilion and food truck park with alcohol sales on a, in an LOD zone.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, you can call the roll.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Look forward to seeing this done. All right, next up, the final item of the evening, C R twenty one dash seventeen on Shamrock Street. We have Cody, welcome back Cody, again. The applicant Ben Semple is on Zoom. Um, I see that nobody from the Neighborhood Association or the public has signed up in advance, but that we have Alexander Monjar, I don't know, Alexander, if you're here, um, for, um, C C D C or on your own, Christine Thomas, and then Buddy from, Bud from Neighbor Works. So just let us know if you're here to testify on this by raising your hand. Um, but at this point, we have nobody here. Sir, are you here for this one? Nope, we have nobody here to testify on this item. Cody, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, this item includes both the rezone prelimi, includes a rezone preliminary and final plat. The three acre site for this project is addressed at nine eleven North Shamrock Street, which is in West Boise. Uh, both the rezone and subdivision are needed to support the project that includes twenty four detached, single family homes. Uh, was heard without opposition by the Planning and Zoning Commission in July of this year. The property is currently zoned R one A or single family residential that allows only up to two point one dwelling units per acre. Uh, the proposal is to change the zoning, uh, to R one C, which would allow up to eight, uh, eight dwelling units per acre. In this case, the twenty four homes included in the, in the development. Uh, as you can see in the map on the left, the property is designated as compact on the land use map. And then it abuts identical R one C zoning on three sides. Uh, you do have A one or open land zoning to the south, but that property too is also designated compact and likely to redevelop at a similar density, uh, to the proposed and the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, the compact designation does allow the proposed R one C or single family residential zone. And this is a location where services, amenities and infrastructure are readily available. In terms of the subdivision to this itself, again, it includes twenty four buildable lots, each to be occupied by a detached, single family home. Uh, the planned unit development isn't before you, but it did allow a slight reduction in lot area and width for each of the, each of the properties. Uh, the project will be served by an extension of Nicole Avenue, a public street. That street will be lined with attached, uh, attached sidewalks as it is to the north, and then it will be stubbed for connectivity to the south. Uh, the new public street will extend back to the east to Shamrock. And a condition of approval will require detached sidewalk with street trees on, uh, Shamrock. I would also note that each of the lots on the north side of that east west, uh, street will, uh, be accessed from shared driveways, which will present kind of a unique, uh, unique residential project, product in the neighborhood and a nice design solution from an aesthetic perspective. Uh, just briefly regarding trees, there are a few existing trees near the existing home and it's hard to see on the drawing at the eastern side of the site that will be removed. Uh, the design does require removal of about seventy two inches, uh, seventy two caliber inches, but primarily for the widening of Shamrock Street that was required. However, the applicant is proposing to save forty two caliber inches around the home and plant another, I believe, a hundred and six caliber inches. So mitigation, uh, will be, uh, more than provided. I believe that does wrap up my comments. As indicated in your packet, the commission did recommend approval of both the rezone, uh, and subdivision. Uh, they found both consistent with the policy guidance of Blueprint Boise and the objective standards of the development code. Uh, we remain unaware of opposition, so we are, and we are recommending approval of both the applications, uh, this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Cody? All right. Ben, you know the drill. There were no questions for Cody.
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of city council, uh, yeah, thanks Cody for the presentation. I don't have a lot to add. I wanted to clarify that the homes, both north and south of the east west road of the project will have shared driveways. So there'll be five curb cuts on both the north and south side, but that will allow for a lot more uh, opportunity for on-street parking for guests, um, of this development. And, uh, the trees that are coming out primarily are large, uh, mature. Uh, I think they're Austrian pines, um, which wouldn't technically or, you know, be allowed within the planter strips that A C H D wants us to put, uh, but we are doing, uh, detached sidewalk with additional street trees. Um, and then we, the, the project report discusses the, the waiver, the landscape buffer along Shamrock. Uh, we do still have about ten feet behind the sidewalk to the se- uh, setback of those homes that will, the sides will face, uh, Shamrock. So we do have the opportunity not only to save a couple of the mature trees within that ten foot space, but plant some additional landscaping, so we'll effectively be providing a buffer as well as the, the street trees in there and the detached sidewalks. Um, that's pretty much all I have to, uh, add, so I would stand for questions.
Doesn't look like there are any questions for you, Ben? If it's all right, I will now see if the Neighborhood Association is here.
No, Madam Mayor.
Or is, it looked like Alexandra was not here for this. Is, um, Bud here for this?
He has not raised his hand.
All right, is there any, sir, are you here for this? Is there anyone else online?
No, Madam Mayor.
All righty. Well, Ben, if it's okay with you, I won't go back for any closing statement, but instead just close this up.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move approval of C A R twenty one dash seventeen Rodney Evidence and Partners, nine eleven North Shamrock Street, rezone of three point two five acres from R one A, um, to R one C.
Okay. You have a motion in a second? Clerk?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I, I just would note that
Sorry about that.
Um, this is a really good use of this property. It's in a location where, um, there are a lot of destinations nearby, um, increasing the density, but keeping the single family unit, um, design, I think, is in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood there. I really appreciate the developer working to save what trees he could and replace, um, add, add caliper, uh, to the tree cover.
Further comments? All right, thanks, Council President.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Uh, Madam Mayor, and I don't know who the abracadabra is, a nod to Ben, but, um, I'll get a kick out of it. I move approval of the abracadabra subdivision, S U B twenty one, twenty four, Boise City Preliminary and Final Platte at nine eleven North Shamrock Street.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Clerk, we call the roll.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Pageant.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I move readjourn.
Second. Give a motion second, all in favor.
Aye.
Host, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.